Do we have the video guy? Good, okay. Call to order, the, move this closer, July 16th, 2019, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. First item on the agenda, 630 Turnpike Street Blue Coat Holdings, application for special permit, site plan review under Part Three, Site Plan Review and 195 10.7, the North Andover zoning by law to allow for the construction of a 295 square foot addition with associated landscaping, stormwater improvements. This is within the Corridor Development District, CDD Three. Do we have anyone here?
Rob McAllan, the contractor.
Thank you, sir, yes, and we did get a email that the applicant couldn't make it and that you would be here. This is a continued public hearing. This was the one with the elevator, they were improving the access. We do have a, Monica, anything outstanding?
No, as requested at the June 4th meeting, I prepared a draft decision. As you can see, there's a couple of minor edits that were, that were made there, and everything else has been satisfied.
Okay. Anybody have questions or comments before we close the public hearing? Let's, any public comments, questions? Seeing none, could we get a motion to close the public hearing for 630 Turnpike Street?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the Site Plan Review Special Permit for 630 Turnpike Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The hearing is now closed, let's review the decision.
Monica, the dates at the top, you have to put, I think the 16th has to get changed there too, which you did, I think, on the front page, but...
Okay, did I miss that one? Thank you.
One, writings of fact two. The proposed new building, it's not a new building, it's just an addition, correct?
That's true.
Yeah. Because I think that's, you know, it's, it's a de minimis change, so I think if you make it just the addition, then it kind of implies that.
Character, the architecture side of the proposed addition will have no negative impact on the aesthetic character. I mean, it's basically staying the same, right? They just wanted to put an elevator on the inside.
Okay, so I'll...
So it's, yeah, it's not adjacent to this building, it's the, of the existing building.
Okay. So I'll, I'll strike new building, I'll add the words addition, and I will say we'll have no negative impact on the adjacent...
No, it's not on the adjacent, it's on the building itself, on the existing building.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
You need punctuation at the end of 15?
Thank you.
Monica, I'm gonna pile it on. Paragraph 10, it notes the 100-foot better zone.
Oh, thank you so much.
Is the public hearing closed today, like the last meeting?
It closes today.
And in the first paragraph, second page, closing of the North Andover Planning Board on July 1st.
Oh, yes.
Oh, Jesus, yes.
Thank you.
Any further comments or changes? Still reading? Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the Site Plan Review Special Permit for 630 Turnpike Street.
As amended?
As amended, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you, sir. Great job.
Yes, okay.
Okay. For High Street, RCG West Mill MALLC, application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with Mass General Chapter 41, Section 81O, 81T, and 81U, and North Andover Code Section 255-5.5, to subdivide map 54 Lot 1 and map 50, 25 into three lots to create a new subdivision road. Pro subdivision is located within the downtown overlay District A, historical mill area, with underlying zoning of IS, R4, and general business. Application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with Mass General Chapter 41, Sections 81O, 81T, and 81U. For High Street Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., application for a Sub District A, definitive master plan, special permit in accordance with Town North Andover Zoning Bylaw, Section 195-18.20. Applicant proposes the construction of a market-rate rental multifamily residential community, to be known as Avalon North Andover, consisting of a total of 250 Studio 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, to be contained within two separate five-story buildings of approximately 103,897 square feet and approximately 171,888 square feet, along with an outdoor pool, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage, and other improvements, to be located on approximately 9.44 acres of land. Project is located within the downtown overlay District A, historic mill area, underlying districts IS, R4, with all buildings proposed within the boundaries of the underlying IS district. We are in a continued public hearing, which was opened on July 9th. Once again, we will not be taking any votes on this today. This will be continued for the July 30th meeting, and potentially also setting up a site plan, or sorry, a site review, site visit. So, hello?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for having us back. Again, David Gillespie from Avalon Bay Communities with me is David Steinberg from RCG, and we're gonna walk through the initial parts of our presentation. Monica, if you go to the next slide. Just a quick agenda from last time. We covered a lot of introductory topics last time, and I think there were some follow-ups that were requested for tonight. First is a discussion of the subdivision road. I think there were some questions about the changes that we're making to that subdivision road physically, to that road, and how the access works, and what improvements are included with the project, and what improvements are not included with the project. So we have some graphics related to that. I think David also has some comments related to the existing mills, and some of the things that have happened over time, and just making some notes regarding some of the comments from last time, as well as questions from the board, to really clarify the record as it relates to the work that they've done over the last several years. Next, fiscal impact discussion. Judy Barrett, our expert, regrets that she could not make it tonight. She did send me the slides for her presentation. I will be making it tonight and answering. She prepared me. I'll answer as many questions as I can. If there's any lingering questions for Judy, certainly she'll be prepared to come back another time, or answer them in writing to the board. And finally, there was a request last time to look at some similar projects that I had proposed, and what are the setbacks at those projects, how close we do residential abutters, what is the density, and what is the affordability at those similar projects. So we have some slides related to that as well. But with that, I'll first turn it over to Dave. If we could just talk about the subdivision? Great. Dave, if you want to go first?
Actually, before I get started on the subdivision, I want to mention that we had submitted a letter to the board to clarify some of the facts and figures that came out in the last meeting. There's some stuff that was published and put online, so if you don't mind, if I could run quickly through some of the statistics, actually, about what's on the campus now. West Mill currently has 39 residential apartments built on-site, that's what it's permitted for. That's been completed, and the build-out of those buildings has essentially been completed. Thirty-nine residential units, about 230,000 square feet of office space on the West Mill side. East Mill has 27 residential units and approximately 180,000 square feet of commercial space. That's everything that's been built out to date. There are permits, there's a special permit for 51 additional units coming up in East Mill. That's, that's the program, just want to clarify some of those figures. There were some questions about contextually, five-story buildings, the 55-foot height. There were some reference we made to the underlying zoning that...
I'll bring the microphone a little closer to you.
Okay.
Are you doing it?
About, about where that 55-foot number came from, but we also cited in that letter the building on East Mill, the building at West Mill, and the buildings at Sutton Pond Condominiums that are five stories and 55 feet about or greater. Finally, the, the West Mill, the completed West Mill project has isolated its parking on its own site. And so the Avalon, the parcels Avalon's proposing build residential buildings on in their own parking lot are not required by West Mill for its parking. We have requested to have a shared parking area that would be convenient for our tenants. There's about 100 spaces that can be done, is part of the justification for a subdivision road. That would make sense to having, unlocking residential parcel and the interaction between the other parcels. If we go, if we start to talk about that subdivision road, and I think that really relates more to the history of the site and the easement to the Sutton Pond Condominiums that, that we have been operating since we owned it and dates back, probably, you know, initially to the different mill owners cooperating, but this particular easement dates back to the early 90s, and when the Sutton Pond Condominiums were built. As you can see on the slide there, in its current form, it is essentially a driveway through a bunch of parking lots that were historically used for commercial uses. On this illustration, you can see in the paved areas, it's actually oriented to the north, to the north of the driveway, there are about 401 parking spaces now. Those used to be filled up by office workers, warehouse workers, other things of the mills. In the Avalon version of that side of the road, they will have about 410 parking spaces. So in the scale of what's going to be used to access that road, it's a pretty similar scale. On the, on the West Mill side of that road, you can see a small parking lot to the right, loading docks in the center, and then this actually shows the former warehouse and distribution center that also was fed by that road, that had a number of loading docks, that had tractor trailers coming and going and operating through the, through the service center there. That, that part of the road still exists as an outlet for the central lots, but most of the parking that we've located in the central lots use the central lot access to High Street now. If we, if we look at the purpose of making the subdivision road, one of the reasons we thought it was a good decision to work off this format was to improve that access to Sutton Pond Condominiums and to the different sites. So you can see in this version, the road gets wider, there's sidewalks, there's landscaping, there's two curb cuts coming in and out of it to go to the shared parking facility and to the Avalon Bay project. We expect this will be a much safer environment, and that given the uses, it'll actually be more balanced use over the course of a day than having all commercial uses all coming off those lots that it had historically. At this time, it's sort of in a low point of usage because of the development of the West Mill, more isolation toward the center of the site than the full utilization of those parking spaces you see on this plan, those 401 parking spaces, although we've been using it for industrial-type staging, the Columbia Gas, emergency response teams, snow storage, there was a brief interlude with the school buses and things like that, that were based on underlying zoning and, you know, the byright uses in industrial zone that presumably could be an alternative use there. I think the other thing worth mentioning about the use of the road is that with the residential use, and I think this comes out of the traffic study, it's been the same curb cut on High Street for however long, servicing all those cars. In fact, the curb cut on the opposite side of High Street coming out of East Mill serves much bigger parking lots, including the 600 space garage. The improved condition there, I think, will be a much better traffic environment, pedestrian environment, and otherwise for all the users of that lot. It also is something that I think in the context of the master plan, as we focused our commercial development on the existing historic mill buildings, those have essentially been, have an imbalance right now. They're almost entirely commercial, you heard about some of the residential going on there, there's retail, there's other intensive uses there. In the master plan, the concept of putting the residential more on these ballfield parcels and parking parcels was to accomplish the mix of uses and the density in the best possible way to have the highest quality housing. We, we looked at other potential uses, mixed uses, industrial office, for different reasons they didn't appeal to us, partly because we're trying to grow that retail environment on our central sites, we didn't want to have competing retail uses. We didn't think industrial was appropriate next to what's essentially bought by most of our residential neighborhoods. So in that master planning process, we looked at the, the dynamic of commercial transitioning to residential, multifamily transitioning to residential, single family. And those elements, I think, are, are well executed in this plan by Avalon Bay, but we can let them describe their own project there. And a few of the benefits that come out of doing this residential project there have infrastructure benefits to the rest of us, us as abutters that we cared about in selecting Avalon Bay. A few of those worth mentioning are the high-quality market rate housing, which has the greatest benefit economically to our businesses and our buildings, and to the downtown, in our opinion. The improvements to the traffic and circulation of these shared parking areas, and elements of landscape lighting and signage that will much improve the aesthetic of what you see as pretty barren parking lots now. Improvements to stormwater management in general, and impact our other campuses of the flow of water across these sites and the older infrastructure. And finally, the component that, for the wetlands that were discovered on the ballfields, that those could be turned into something actually environmentally positive, that they'd be enhancement of the wetlands, that they could incorporate into their project, and I think that was dealt with as well in their program. The geography, sorry, the geometry of the site is challenging, there's a lot of easements in addition to having wetlands components and infrastructure that's shared. And I think, given that, as they approach their design, and as you look at density and within the other parameters, we're really happy with this solution, and just wanted to give that sort of context to the setup as we developed that master plan originally.
Has there, has there been any discussion of continuing this road somehow out to Sutton Street? I mean, it's, it's still tough. I, I agree that this picture looks better than what's there now, but it doesn't necessarily account for all the traffic that there's going to be increased. But if you had another way of getting in and getting out, it would really make a big difference.
Yeah, actually, we looked closely at that, you know, dating back to when we originally acquired the parcel. So a couple of the challenges are, one, the wetland does carry through to the end of the site and separates it from Sutton Street, but that's privately-owned land. So the Clean Harbors parcel is the dead end of that industrial road, and has certain constraints on it. So we actually, at the time, reached out to them, asked if they'd be interested in cooperating with a development program, or selling the land, or doing anything else, and that didn't work at that time. So I know, we worked with town officials on seeing if there was, there would be a nice connection there to get people in and out. There were also studies done back, I think in the early 90s, when Sutton Pond Condominiums was permitting, to see if they could get out that way, and that, that couldn't be accomplished at that time either. So we sort of abandoned that and said, the scale of this project should be able to be managed off the High Street curb cut.
Just might be worth a further conversation, phone call upon conversation now. I mean, just, if it's not a possibility, it's not a possibility, but if it was a possibility, I know, I think it could make a big difference, you know, having, you've heard a lot of the concerns about traffic coming in and out, about onsite traffic with people getting out from Sutton Pond, if there was another way out or in, I think you might be able to alleviate some of that. So, worth looking into. I know it's not your property, so, but to the extent that you can look into it would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, any other...
I guess the question I have is, is, are we gonna get a chance to look at the subdivision road sort of from an engineering perspective? I mean, in every subdivision, that's what we do, and the picture sort of provides one dimension to it, but I'd like to see everything related to the road construction, how far it goes, how it ends, what is the right way, 50 feet all the way, what's the paved surface, all that sort of stuff, so...
And as far as I know, they're still, you guys are still working with DPW, because DPW had some concerns about the layout of the road, so you guys are, I mean, ultimately we have to vote on it, but DPW's say goes a long way with us, and I think, I mean, I read their, what they want to see versus what you want to see, and I know you guys are still talking about that. So I, I think after that conversation, maybe the time to bring it here, once that, those conversations have finished, if there's a consensus, or if there's not a consensus. If you want one thing and they say one thing, fine, then bring it all here, but if you can reach a consensus, even better.
I think the point of this graphic is that last time when we were here, it was just unclear what our program was for this, the improvements on this road, not necessarily the technical analysis, but how is it gonna work and form and function. I think our traffic engineer, who I think we're prepared to bring next time, was, was suggested after the peer review is in, could, will opine more on it, obviously, but to go from essentially a perme, you know, a permeable curb cut that has, I don't know, six or eight ways in and out of that parking lot, to a more organized two-curb cut into the parking lot is obviously a much safer condition. Allows us to do the landscaping, allows us to provide a sidewalk from Sutton Pond Condominiums that gets out to High Street, crosswalk in front of the subdivision road, really makes it a pedestrian-friendly environment, which it is not today. So there's just a little more clarity on that.
Remind me again where the roadway would exit, is it directly across from an exit on the other side, or is it up a little bit?
It essentially lines up with the East Mill curb cut coming out of those parking lots.
Okay, okay.
One of the comments from DPW was to study aligning it with Prescott Street instead of aligning it with the East Mill driveway. I think we're looking at it from an engineering point of view of what the feasibility of it is, and I think also from a traffic point of view, our traffic engineer's gonna weigh in, because moving it north to, towards Prescott, you know, shortens the site distance as you come along that curve from High Street. So he's gonna now look at that from a safety point of view, as well as the traffic counts. You know, I don't know them, I'll, I'll let him speak to those next time, but the amount of traffic that comes out of the East Mill parking lot, as David mentioned, has a lot of parking, and maybe it's safer for those two curb cuts to be across from each other instead of aligning with Prescott, which at, at the same time may have actually less traffic flow than the East Mill curb cut. So I'll let him speak to that next time, but those are all things we're thinking about and prepared to talk about.
Okay.
We will be prepared to talk about it.
So, and so I think we'll really dive into traffic at the, at the next hearing.
Great.
Okay, thank you. So if you want to continue, that'd be great.
Great, okay, go to the next one. So next, I'll be going through the fiscal impact study, and certainly prepared to answer any questions about that.
So let me just see this. So this was a study done by someone that you guys hired, and we're having our own review of this study, is that right? Are we having someone review this?
We have our peer review consultant is working on the traffic study. We do have the Assistant Superintendent Schools who'll be talking on the impact as it relates to school from this, but we, we don't have anyone reviewing the fiscal study as of yet.
Could we? I mean, I think that's important. I mean, we can definitely talk about the schools, but it's not just the schools, there are other fiscal impacts, both potentially positive and negative, and it would be nice to have someone independent look at that.
A third party, okay, definitely.
She did work for us for a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Great, no problem. Just, I think what you'll see, go to the next slide, we need a second, Monica, I think that the key questions that come out of a fiscal impact study, and we've done them at several communities, is, you know, will Avalon North Andover pay for itself? Are we gonna be a drain on municipal resources, or are we gonna be a positive to municipal resources? And how will the needs of the residents, that the future residents be met by the town of North Andover? And, you know, what are those needs, and what will it cost to serve them? And how much tax revenue are we going to provide to the town? And I think the findings from this report are that we are greatly revenue-positive, greater than I've seen in any other development that, that we've proposed in the last several years, and I can go into those details next. First is, this is just Judy's approach and how she does it, it's very technical, it's almost an engineering-like review. She reviews municipal budgets, she looks at the projection based on information that we provide, and information that she has in our existing databases, to say, school-age children, how many calls are expected for public safety officials, and so on. And she uses information from our developments, because we have 11,000 apartments, we can provide information about what's happening in other places, and then she has her own database that she has from doing these studies for a number of years, that she uses to backcheck everything. So we can go to the next one, this is her approach. Working vocabulary, just a little background, you know, revenue positive, obviously, we pay more in than we take out, and the other revenue things. And I think the takeaway from the report is that we are substantially revenue-positive. So fiscal snapshot is that our projected gross revenue from our tax receipts, as well as our excise taxes from the cars, is almost $890,000, and Judy predicts, Barrett Planning predicts, that our service costs are $387,000 rounding. And that leaves us with 480, almost 487,000 in net benefit to the town of North Andover, above what services that we'll provide, which means that for every dollar we pay into North Andover's tax base, 54 cents goes to the bottom line, and 44 cents goes to service the residents of Avalon North Andover.
So what are the, the two sources of revenue? One is the tax, the real estate taxes, right? So whatever the new value of that property is in the real estate tax portion, that's one. And then excise taxes, so whoever lives there and owns a car pays excise taxes, okay. So you might have some overlap if someone from North Andover who already owns a car moves there, that's already, you know, funds we're already receiving, but to the extent there are new people or new cars, that would be new revenue.
Right, but then certainly you would assume that if someone moved out of another North Andover resident, that gets backfilled by somebody, they would have a car as well, so...
Okay, fair enough.
That's how we looked at it, so, go to the... A little bit about the demographics, this is how we get to the 411 residents that I mentioned last time, and the 44 school-age children. So, simple analysis, Judy starts with the unit mix, and applies house, average household size per unit style to calculate the total population number of 411, studio apartments just over one person, one bedrooms 1.2, two bedrooms just over two, and three bedrooms just under three residents per apartment. And that's how that analysis is done. The school-age population is done in a similar fashion, where studios, you know, have no school-age children, one bedrooms have very, very few, two bedrooms 0.28, so one, roughly one school-age children for every four two-bedroom apartments, and then three bedrooms 0.67. So you take those factors and multiply them out and get to 44 projected school-age children.
What is the database of events that you're using to calculate those percentages of, you know, the 0.67, the 0.28? Just trying to get a sense that, you know, where, where does that come from? You, you mentioned that you have quite a bit history, which, which I appreciate, but is that based on your aggregating your history, or similar projects? You know, where does that come from?
Sure. So what we do is we obviously keep demographic information for comparable communities, so we look at the suburban portfolio for Avalon Bay, which isn't the full 11,000. We have some downtown Boston and Cambridge, which we exclude from this analysis, but you start looking at the suburbs, you get a pretty consistent trend, and there are ways to, there are things that impact it. Obviously, bedroom size impacts it, level of affordability impacts it, desirability of the school system impacts it. So there's all sorts of factors that will come in and provide a range. We will, we aggregated all this data, provided it to Judy, this replicate, we did a separate study for right now, for what's happening right now. We did a separate study, similar analysis, five years ago or so, and that came with similar results. So in the last five years, it hasn't moved that much as far as the predictability of the tool, and we're comfortable that, you know, these are, you know, within the range of the data that people that will see that live at this community. So about 400, just over 400 residents and about 44 school-age kids.
And this is at market-rate apartments, correct?
This is at market rate. So this number would be higher if there was, if it was a 40B.
How much higher?
I, I would predict it'd be 60-ish.
But it would also depend on which units are affordable, right? So, I mean, if you went across the board, it would, it would stay consistent, but if, if the studios and one-bedrooms were more of the affordable units, more for either seniors or young professionals, then you would, you would still, you might see an increase, but it wouldn't be as much if the three bedrooms and two bedrooms were more of the affordable, then you'd see a lot higher.
Yeah. If it was under 40B, you wouldn't have that flexibility, but if it was a one-off or some other type of zoning...
Well, if we said you had to have 10%, like if you had an inclusionary zone... Well, if we said you had to have ten percent, like if you had an inclusionary zoning, and just ten percent in total had to be, you know, so, but yeah.
There's ways to do it, but I think that the, the two things you'd see in a forty B are, one, under forty B, you'd be required to have ten percent three bedrooms, and on top of that, you'd provide twenty-five percent modern income apartments at eighty percent of area median income, so it's a, it's a different type of development than the impacts that you'll see from this, being a hundred percent market rate.
Peter, being a devil's advocate here, because I understand how you did it, but my question is this, do other people who've done studies come up with different conclusions than this, in terms of the numbers?
I wouldn't think fundamentally, and I think that if you read, and I like the folks from the school district themselves, I, I think, and they will, I think that if you read the comments that came back from the schools, the opening line is that, in general, for a new apartment community, they're in general agreement with the number of school-aged children that we were predicting were going to come out of this development, so I'll let them speak to that.
We must have had other studies done for other ones that I think, I mean, these numbers look similar to what we.
My backline question, we did it for the, for Jetta one, and I forget exactly what the numbers are, Peter, do you remember? I mean, I, I think it was reasonably close, but the mix of apartments was a little bit different, I don't think there was many studios, and there were more ones and twos, but it was relatively small number, I think.
Right, I actually pulled this data today, and I didn't include that in here, but I, I can, so there were no three bedrooms listed in the, in the initial community impact statement, it was one and two-bedroom units, I think it was based upon a hundred and, I'm, I'm drawing a blank here, but ultimately, it was a lot, it was fewer units, and they're projecting approximately sixteen school-aged children.
If we could get that, but I mean, it's, I think to John's point, it's the percentages that are really important.
Right.
So, if we could get that for, for Jetta and for maybe for Berry if they have them, I don't know if we did it.
Keep in mind Berry Farms is also a forty B, so that's.
Oh, never mind, okay, so that wouldn't apply. Was one done for the Knights of Columbus coming up?
Not, well, the Knights of Columbus does not have any three-bedroom units, so they're not projecting any impact, so that's, it, it's kind of something different, I do have, actually, let me, well, I, I don't want to move away from your slide, but I can, I can provide you the community impact from, from the Princeton properties, I did speak with, actually, Jamili did ask for information for two other projects, but again, those others that he asked for, those were forty Bs, so you're going to see, it's, it's kind of apples and oranges.
Okay. Great, go to the next slide.
Can I ask you to go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Can you just walk me through about these numbers add up? When you're getting net, net revenue of four eighty-six, you're subtracting what from what?
No, we start by, we're paying in top line, eight hundred and, almost eight hundred and ninety thousand.
Yeah.
Then our total service cost is three hundred and eighty-six, six hundred, which is a subset of the numbers below, is there?
Is it?
There's maybe a math error.
I'm, I'm just having a hard time adding it up, and maybe I'm off, but it doesn't seem to make, it doesn't seem to make sense.
Should be three fifteen and eighty-seven.
Yeah, I think the eighty-seven is not the sum of those three numbers either.
Yeah. Forty-one, fifty-five, eighty-seven's not right, forty-one, fifty-five, seventy, that should be seventy. Yeah, I mean, that's what eighty-seven is, not right.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think, I think some of the sub, subtotals are wrong, and I'll, I'll correct it for the record.
Yeah, great.
But I think that, in general, I think the conclusion is correct, I think we just need to make sure, clean up the slide and make sure it's clear.
Let's just make sure.
I, we will.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I thought it was me.
No, you're, you're correct, I apologize for that. So, keep, we go through, I think that, based on our experience and Judy's experience as well, I think that there's a generally stable school-aged child population as it goes through, and I think it's because we turn over more often, and people come and leave, about fifty percent of their residents leave in a given year, and there's a whole subset of reasons why people move, sometimes they buy a house, sometimes they move to different communities, rental apartments provide that option for folks that.
Could you speak closer to the.
Sure.
Do you find, do you find that the units with families, or the two bedrooms and the three bedrooms, turn over at the same rate, that's the singles and studios?
I, I, I think that they probably turn over a little less, but in general, a lot of times when people come to our communities and live, they will live there for a period of time, we call them, you know, test driving a community, so they'll say, you know what, we're, we have a job, it's on four ninety-five, we think we like North Andover, but let's live there for a year, get accustomed to the community, and then go look, look for a house while we're living there, instead of living somewhere else, Denver's or Somerville, wherever they might live at the time. And I think that the real driver of school-aged kids in a, in a community, and Judy would tell you this, is really four and five-bedroom, single-family homes and fifteen-unit subdivisions, not multifamily apartments, because they're just not designed in a function, in a, in a way that, you know, supports the kind of spaces that, you know, larger family sizes want. I think that there could be a range, I think Judy notes that, there's forty-four projected, it could range in a given year, I think you'll see that in your current school enrollment, that they're plus or minus a few percent every year, but her note is that the East and West Mill, which have sixty-six units, only have currently three school-aged children, so there's existing data which supports potentially a much lower amount of school-aged children, but I think based on what we know in our existing portfolio, we're feel, we feel good about the forty-four school-aged children number.
Are there three-bedroom units in the East and West Mills, or those just?
They're not, no.
Studios ones and twos, no. There, there's only studios, one bedrooms and two-bedroom units at East Mill or West Mill now.
Okay. So, go on to the next.
There, there are some three bedrooms in that, but since it hasn't been built yet or occupied, we, we don't know what it's going to, you know, give us for school-aged children on that building.
So, I think, in Judy's assumptions, just to go through, this is about the impacts to the schools, I think that taking the forty-four school-aged children, assuming there's a distribution as there is throughout the grades, she predicted that there would be additional two-point-one-eight full-time employees required by the school department, that was what she used to build her analysis, that was three hundred and something, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars required to cover the school budget, so it would be two full-time employees, additional supplies, and a new bus route, those were the three things that she included as the incremental analysis for our forty-four students.
If you took the number and did it by the weighted average of what the school costs.
If we use thirteen thousand, I will tell you that even if you doubled the, this is about seven, seventy-seven hundred or so per school-aged child is what the, she predicts the cost will be, even if you doubled it, doubled the projected cost, we're still revenue positive.
So, there will be a time for questions or comments, but we're going to let them go through their presentations, then the assistant superintendent is going to get up, and we're going to talk with him, then people can have all the time they need to ask questions or make comments.
I just have a question about the, at the spread of, the spread of the teachers, it says two, you'll need an additional, assumes an additional two-point-one-eight FTE, additional elementary school teachers, what's kind of the assumption of the spread of age, that, right, because you don't know, do you get, is it forty-four fifth graders are equally spread out amongst, you're assuming only two additional teachers, so what's, I'm just asking, what is the assumption for that spread?
Well, it varies a lot year to year, and I think what she is, you know, whether there's more fifth graders or third graders, and where the impact would need to be, I think that what she assumes is that with the forty-four school-aged children, you wouldn't need to add classrooms in the high school or the middle school, but in the elementary schools, given that there may be a year where the incremental students put you over the requirement for an additional classroom, that that may, that would happen twice in any given grade within the elementary school, so if it's K through five, that would assume that at any given point, there would be two classrooms that would need an additional incremental teacher, or additional incremental classroom to make it still.
I mean, those things are elusive, I personally, I think, better off using the weighted average cost per student, because it normalizes for all those things, I mean, the, the problem from a community perspective, if you're in a situation where you're at a tipping point and all your schools are full, and this will contribute to the need for a new elementary school, you get that ratchet effect, and it, it's not fair for you to, to absorb a large portion of the cost of that in your analysis, nor is it fair to just assume marginal cost either, that's why I think using the full cost of every person you bring is, is the easiest and the cleanest way to do it.
I guess this is my point, I think no matter whether you use the incremental analysis, which Judy strongly suggests is the way that municipal finance is done generally, that's, half of her business is advising, you know, development projects, and half of it is in the planning and advising towns, she does both, so I think that she would stand by this methodology, that said, in this instance, the, the project is so positive, that even if we use the more conservative
I mean, I agree with you, but I just feels to me it's a more open and transparent way of doing it, that's all.
Maybe just go to the final one, and then there was one other comment in the school comments that came through, just to go to the final slide, and it was really about how does the money get allocated, once we start contributing it to the town of North Andover, and that happens through the town meeting process, it does not happen through a fiscal impact analysis, so the town of North Andover could take the excess revenue, or any of the revenue, and allocate it sort of how they choose, so it doesn't mean that, and I think one of the comments from the school department was, it becomes an issue where we may not get the budget to cover the incremental cost, even if the project provides enough revenue to cover that incremental cost, and I think we're just saying that that's sort of outside of our control, that's really governed by town meeting and, and the budgetary process within the town, so just a comment to that effect, and that's it. So, with that, I don't know if you want to, that's the end of fiscal.
Yeah, why don't you go through all of it?
Go through all of it, okay, great, so, next, there was some questions last time about density, affordability, and distances, and a whole bunch of other things, and Ed Bradford here from TAT, who's, was the architect on these projects as well, he can sort of comment on any architectural questions, but what we did was we looked at, using the data that we could find, GIS, aerial photographs, other zoning information where we could find it, we tried to put together a summary that did as close as we could estimate apples to apples between the proposal that we have in front of you, and some other comparable developments that we showed last time, so, as you can see in summary, our, this site, and we have slides that go through each of these site plans, you can actually see how things work, North Andover's twenty-six point six units per acre, and FAR of point six seven, our closest residential, a butter home to home, so this isn't a setback, this is from that person's house to the side of our building, is a hundred and sixty-eight feet, and that's actually the closest is the two townhouses that are in Sutton Pond, it's not, not the High Street homes, and the affordability that we're proposing is all market, as you go down, you can see, and I'll go through each in detail, there is a range of units per acre, they're pretty site-specific, but you'll see even a, a closer clustering around FAR, which is really the total square footage that we built, divided by the acreage, and you'll see that even in, for example, Sudbury, which is when we go through, it's a pretty low-density product on a pretty large site, I think we commented on that last time, because the units are very large, you end up with a similar square footage for the lot size, so just wanted to note that, I think the other thing to note is that Sutton Pond, we took a look at their developed area, and their, their number of units, and came that, actually, our proposal right now is actually slightly less dense than Sutton Pond's on a units per acre, I didn't have information on their total square footage, so I didn't estimate that, but just to sort of put it in context of the other things that are happening around us, and next, the closest to butter, we can, just,
is, is, is it ten percent affordable in Saugus, because they have a zoning.
They have inclusionary zoning ordinance, so, sort of, closest to butter ranges, you know, in Marlboro, we, we're in an entirely commercial district, so they're just not a comparable there, but they range really from just over a hundred feet to three hundred feet, and a range of affordability levels, we talked about that last time, Marlboro's all-market, two forty Bs in this subset, another all-market, and one that's ten percent affordable, inclusionary, so just a range of, of backgrounds.
I, thank you for this, this is actually very helpful, and very instructive, a couple of questions on the numbers, you mentioned Sudbury, and you mentioned the units were bigger, what are we talking about, like, more of a tilted two and three, is that basically?
I have a site plan for every development that's up here, and I can walk you through them, we could talk about each of them individually, Sudbury is three-story, three-story product, it's on, it's on a much larger site, and those units are, on average, approaching, you know, seventeen or eighteen hundred square feet, so they're probably tw- you know, going twice as big as the units we have here, obviously, it's a forty B as well, which, and the school impacts there were higher than they are here for the same amount of units, so.
The other question, I'm just generic, is units per acre is obviously a raw number, it's numerator and denominator, did you back out wetlands or unbuildable area, when any of them?
Where, where we could, where we had information, we used the information, and where we used, had to use GIS or aerial photos, we just used those to come up with the numerators and denominators, so we, you can see, you'll see what was included, and I can go back and backcheck and make sure that, for any that seem odd.
Looks like it's all, why don't you go, why don't you go to the slides, because I think it actually does kind of show, I think it answers, it might answer a question.
Show you the area of what's included, so, go to the next.
I guess it would be, is it possible if, if you have the slides of, if you could do two of them, I like maybe the Sudbury one, and one other one that's maybe most comparable to this, I don't know which of them, but that would be actually interesting, or is that?
Sudbury.
This is Sudbury, okay.
So, go to the next one. I think that this is just to start by, say, in the context of this current project, so, as you can see here, we took some dimensional requirements, it's a hundred and sixty-eight feet is from the, in the lower left, the two-unit townhouse, that's part of Sutton Pond, as you go over to the High Street neighbors, there are setbacks there, from building to building, range from a hundred and eighty-six to two hundred and seventeen feet, so just to put that in context, as we go through the other sites, what the distances might be, it doesn't, every project is different, so the impacts, in this instance, might not be the same as the impacts in other projects, but I think, just to trying to compare the projects, we, we use the same, same metrics, go to the next. This is the Marlboro site, so we took the, on top of the hill, we have a large multifamily building in Marlboro, there's, this is an entirely commercial district, we took the multifamily building that we developed there, and the parking areas associated with it, and calculated the density, as you'd see, the density is about the same on the FAR, on the FAR front, I don't think this is directly applicable to this site, but wanted to put it in there because it was a project that we showed last time, and we wanted to try to compare them. Go to the next one, this is the Hingham Shipyard, this is the second phase of the Hingham Shipyard, which we recently developed, those are forty B, the buildings to the north, so the L-shaped building and the small direct-entry buildings that you can see just up page from us, those are actually our Phase One buildings, so, took a little of our own, own medicine in this instance, I think the closest spot is sixty-two feet to our building, in one instance, and a hundred and nineteen feet in the second instance, to Bradley Woods, which is the residential development to the right, the range, the setbacks range from a hundred and seven feet to a hundred and ninety-nine feet from those residential units, it's a pretty dense site, it's structured parking, parking is underneath the building, so obviously makes for a very high units per acre and FAR, so not directly applicable, but it is a good demonstration of a project that we built very close to residential butters.
And, and close to commercial, too.
And close to commercial, yes.
They, on the right of the project, that's a single-family residential neighborhood?
Yes, it is.
And has it been there forever, I'm just trying to get a sense.
Yes, they were, they were there before, before us, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, at the shipyard, you, as you go in, there's all the commercial and the water and the boats and the restaurants, and then it gets to some of this multifamily residential, and then it goes to single-family, kind of like what David was talking about, how it's kind of phased in, it works well there, I mean, it's a bigger site, obviously.
It's a much bigger site, a lot more density, and we have approaching five hundred apart, four hundred and fifty or five hundred apartments there, whereas, and there's other residential uses, there's million-dollar condominiums that are less than a hundred feet from our project, our property, our Phase One property, so, this was all designed in, in concert together, I think that what we're doing here at the East and West Mills is a little more, because there's historic buildings that were developed over time, I think we're trying to fit in, but this was master planned from the start, because all of the uses were new. Go to the next, this is our Quincy development, I don't think it's necessarily directly applicable, but you can see the red outline, we took the developable, the uplands portion of this project, parking and, and structures, this has structured parking as well, which makes it a little bit of a less applicable development, it's not all surface parked, but as you can see, it's a, it's a density that's higher than the density that we're proposing at North Andover. The next, this is our Avalon Saugus project, which is next to the Hilltop Steakhouse, it's two zones as part of this project, on the right-hand, far right-hand side is the retail, and the dedicated parking for the retail on one side of the red line, the other side of the red line is the entirely residential portion, which has all of our residential parking, and our two hundred and eighty-six apartment, two hundred and eighty, how many apartments is that, two hundred and eighty apartments there, three buildings, so three buildings, I think this is fairly comparable, in the sense that the density is somewhat similar, the FAR. So three buildings, I think this is fairly comparable in the sense that the density is somewhat similar, the FAR is similar, and from a proximity to residential abutters ranges from a hundred and thirty feet to two hundred and seventy-two feet on the backside.
Can you go back to the previous one, please?
Sure.
That distance of two hundred and seven feet in the upper right.
Yes, yes.
Is that to a single-family house, or is that a multifamily structure?
It might be a multifamily house, and the other thing that's a little bit different in this site than in the site that we're talking about today is there's a serious grade change, this is up on a, high on a hill, so that, that home is down below. I don't think this project is specifically apples-to-apples applicable to this project, but I included it because it's just a recent development that we've done with TAT, the same architect, and it has an all-market rate component. But I think from a density point of view, it's a little bit different because of the amount of structured parking that's included. Well, this is, yeah, this is, this is the Quincy one, but yeah, the Route One one is next. But behind the Route One, if we go to the.
I guess the reason, the only reason I'm asking is, I, first off, I appreciate you providing all the examples. I agree with John, I think it's very helpful. When, when they're summed up in the table on page twelve, you know, in that format, we tend to draw conclusions. And there, it's important to note whether it's apples-to-apples. So, you know, in the closest of butter, we're comparing in the table Quincy two hundred and seven feet, North Andover a hundred and sixty-eight. Nah, it's pretty close, except it's really not apples-to-apples, because I'm pretty sure that's a multifamily. And if you draw the line to a single-family, which you can, you have a single-family, what it's going to show is that this has a much greater separation. And then when you see it on the table, I just think it's a more apples-to-apples representation. So I guess what I'm saying is, A, love all the samples, B, I really like the descriptions as you go through.
Sure.
But sometimes your verbal qualifiers are not showing up on your comparative table. And there, I'm a little concerned, because it skews a little bit.
Sure.
So it's just something for you to keep in mind, maybe.
Absolutely, and I think that we were just trying to provide that in summary to set the table. I expected to go through each of these in detail and caveat them as we were looking at a plan that we could all react to during the process. So I wanted to provide the summary, every project is different, it's really hard to make these comparisons, because, you know, grade changes matter, buffers matter, all of these things matter. And I think that this was really just out of a request last time from the board to provide details of other developments that we have. So from Sawgus, I mean, this is Route One on one side, but on the backside, it is residential in character, single-family home, residential's in character, and, you know, where just approximately to the abutters. This is the Sudbury development, which is a much different type of product, it has townhouses and direct-entry apartment homes. It's thirty-three buildings on a site to make two hundred and fifty apartments. I, the reason we included this is I wanted to show that even for a product that is really different, the FAR is not that different. And I think that the type of buildings that we have here are very different. So in that sense, it's not apples-to-apples.
How tall are these townhouses?
You know, three feet.
How tall is the roof?
Yeah, three stories plus a pitched roof.
I mean, did you think, just, just, did you think of a concept like this for this particular project? I mean, I know you would have to cut it in half probably, because it's, this is seventeen acres, so it's a lot bigger, but, I mean, you could, you know, a hundred and twenty-five units or something like that, on, and I'm just, just curious.
Yeah, this product would not fit well on this site, given all the constraints with the wetlands and the easements and so on. Just with the geometry, it was, it's very, we talked about last time, I think, with the easements, the wetlands, and all the things that are happening on site, that you are really pushed into a particular geometry here that might not be exactly what we would have done if we had more options, but is where we ended up because of the impacts that are happening there, and I just wanted to note that. So I think this is my last one, I believe, Sudbury, oh, back to North Andover. So if there's any particular questions related to this, this site plan, this layout.
So it looks like, it looks like it includes the wetlands and the nine point four acres.
Yeah, it does.
So just a question, thinking about some of the other more comparable ones in terms of the closeness of the abutters. What we're interested in, if there, if there were any objections from the abutters beforehand, kind of how they resolve themselves, or how kind of the abutters' opinions are now of those like communities.
I think it varies a lot, I think that there are some where, some people don't, don't have an issue with it, some people do, and we usually work with them, meet with them, you know, we've met with Sutton Pond, we've met with the direct abutters on High Street. It's not that we haven't. And I guess my only, to build on your comment, we are presenting the project tonight, this is a continuation really of our introductory presentation on the proposal that we submitted. So we had the first, which was the introduction, this fiscal impact and answering some questions. Next, we'll do traffic, which I think assesses it, assesses that impact as well. And we are getting comments from this board, we're getting comments from the abutters, we're getting comments from town departments, we'll be getting comments from the Conservation Commission, we need to get involved in that process. And we fully expect that we will take all of those comments and make modifications to this proposal. I can't say tonight what those modifications will be, but it's not, this is it, and this is what, I do not expect this is what you'll be voting on. What I expect to be voting on will be something that is more reflective of the comments we've received over the two months that we've been involved in the public process here. So I just wanted to make that comment as well. So we're here to listen, we're going to try to reflect as many of those as we can, there are some realities that were, you know, that exist with this site. We think that the impacts from this development are manageable. We think that the school, the fiscal impact, we think that the traffic impacts, that the engineering impacts, the architectural impacts are appropriate. We understand that there are some unique site considerations related to abutters that we need to think about and work on. But in general, we think that our proposal meets the overlay district and the special permit standards, but we understand that there are some community concerns that we need to think about and revise based on it.
Great. So why don't we have the Assistant Superintendent come on up? You guys, why don't you guys take a seat, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. Want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Jim Mealy, Assistant Superintendent for the Finance and Operations for the North Andover School Department.
Thank you very much, thank you for being here, we really appreciate it. So I know you submitted a letter, so I, I don't know if you could just kind of walk us through your thoughts on what's been presented in terms of the fiscal impact of the proposed development as it is to the finances of the school.
Sure, so the different functions that I have in the school department, the two most pertinent ones to the discussion tonight are that I'm responsible for the school budget and I'm responsible for our enrollment projections for the students. I appreciate the presentation addressing the concerns we had raised in the letter when given the opportunity to speak to this project. As I said in the letter, given our history in student enrollment projections, we have a high level of confidence in the numbers that they are presenting, for a few different reasons. If you compare it to, and it's not apples-to-apples, but if you compare it to Berry Farms, the distribution of the number of bedrooms is about the same. And with Berry Farms having some affordable housing units in it, even if you projected that to this development, you'd come up with about forty-four, so we would anticipate that it might even be a little bit lower than forty-four, just because it's all market-rate housing units. And given the location as well, we don't see a lot of units attracting student-aged children. So we would have to have a high level of confidence in the enrollment projection that they give. As far as the fiscal impact, what happened, I can tell you the municipal subtotal is incorrect on that one.
Yeah.
The overall total is correct, but the municipal number is incorrect. So we'd have to have a high level of confidence on what they think it would cost directly. And they're correct, because as he said tonight, and as they have indicated in their reports, it's more accurate to talk about the marginal cost, because that's what we really deal with, especially secondary, middle school and high school. You add nine students to each level, you're not going to see much in additional cost. The risk, as I said in my letter, would be in special needs that might come up with additional students. Right now, fifteen percent of our students require those, and one out of every sixty-five or so students is an added district placement, which is a higher cost to it. So there's always that. But more concerning would be the space issue, for a couple of different reasons. One, and we're dealing with this this year, this is a Thompson Elementary District, and we had to add a teacher in the first grade at Thompson Elementary, because it was right at that, do we go with twenty-three students? Or for two classes, or do we go with seventeen or so at three classes? So those are the margins that we're talking about. But that number that they have there would probably cover that. The more long-term concern is that we don't have much more room at our schools. So if we do have to add additional classrooms, we don't always have the space to do that. And as, and this is something out of their control, as we add more market-rate developments, at some point, we're going to have to add some affordable housing units, and those will generate more students. And so that would be a long-term concern, but again, that's out of their control, as is the, how much of the funding goes directly to the school department, as I said in my letter. We get three and a half percent per year on average, as all departments do, and our level services cost us about three percent. So it gives us, you know, half a percent to work with. And so if we do see those additional costs, because of the system and the fact that we're not going to get three hundred and fifteen or so thousand dollars added to our budget, it would impact overall services.
So some of the comments, we've received a lot of comments with concerns about that, and I think they're all legitimate concerns. So it seems like we're pretty comfortable, you're pretty comfortable with the numbers that they're projecting, and they might be accurate or could be lower. What's the current state, you said that this is Thompson School District. What's the current state of Thompson School and the middle school? You said the high school, there really wouldn't be too much of a concern, but Thompson School and middle school, where are we right now with our numbers? And, because a lot of people said, you know, there, it's packed, and we don't have room for more. Where do we actually stand?
Right, so we could probably add, if we had to, a couple more classrooms at Thompson, but no more than that. The middle school, I don't know if you're aware, but we've applied for the last couple of years, this is the third year in a row now that we will have applied to MSBA for a renovation expansion at the middle school, because it is overcrowded right now.
So that one needs, the middle school needs, regardless of this project, it needs.
It does, right, and.
And this won't help, depending on how many students go to the middle school?
Correct.
Okay, what's the class levels at, and again, I have a something that goes to Thompson, so it depends on the grade, right?
Correct.
Fifth versus fourth versus third, depends on, you know, and how many are coming in next year. So, and obviously, all these, if these apartments were built, it would be over time, they're not going to be all inhabited at the same time, so it happens over a period of time. But what are our average students per grade at Thompson?
So we try to maintain twenty to twenty-two for the first and second grade, and then twenty-three to twenty-five for third, fourth, and fifth grades.
Okay, and so we just went over that and now added a teacher in one of the grades?
For first grade, we had, we ended up adding an additional classroom in order to get below those numbers.
Is there any flexibility with Atkinson or Kittredge?
So Kittredge, no, Kittredge is the tightest we have, it's a smaller school, and possibly Atkins. So what happens, we have the ability to redistrict, so to speak, students and have them go to another school instead of adding a classroom, if there's no room at that school to do so. So that's something we've done in the past, not something we'd like to do, because then we're responsible for transportation, and you're split, you're possibly splitting up families, and they may have moved into that particular location for a particular school. So it's not something we like to do, but it is something that has happened.
How close at the elementary level are you to that tipping point where you absolutely positively need a new school? I mean, you're doing a marvelous job, you know, moving things around, but at some point, you can't go any further.
So we've been very fortunate, when I first started here, this is starting my eleventh year now. They had, had discussions and came close to adding another elementary school, but the numbers just didn't bear it out. And we've been fortunate that we got to that, the point we're at now, which is pretty tight across the district, but it's been leveled for ten years now. And we now have, coming up as part of Facilities Master Plan Phase Two, it's going to solve two, two problems. At two of our schools, we have very old portable classrooms, which aren't ideal anyway. So three projects as part of Phase Two are Atkinson, Franklin, and Kittredge, removing their portables and adding additional classrooms. So we're building some capacity as part of Phase Two.
What's the timeline for that?
I think the construction schedule would be Franklin first. Mind you, we still have to have the committee come together and finalize priorities and what the projects will be. We're hoping that Franklin would be first and FY twenty-three. And then design, while that one's being constructed, design of the next one and construction of the following year, as we've been doing with our other projects.
Okay. Additional questions?
I just have one thing, it's, it's more speaking to the topic of affordable housing. I know when we were reviewing the master plan, we heard that our, at the time, our current state of affordable housing stock was a hair below nine percent. I'd be curious to know, now that a few more projects have at least been permitted, if all those come to fruition, including this one, what does that number look like? I don't know if we have resources to be able to tabulate that.
I'll have to get that information for you.
And so I'd like to, I also like to talk about affordable, because I'm, again, so we're going, I think, Jim, I think, I think we're going to take people from the audience, public now, so they may have some questions that I'll need to go to you on.
Sure, you want to stay right here?
Uh, yeah, that would be great. I do want to have the affordability discussion, because I would have liked to see this project have some affordability and at least discuss that, because, yeah, you're right, I think we're, I think we were at eight point five, if we add two hundred, two hundred and fifty units.
Well, I'm just thinking more of this, in particular with the school discussion, that how, you know, this, this project, if it, if it gets permitted, will have an effect, but, you know, other ones will come online. So it's more of a, it's the school question in the affordable housing only one, not necessarily should there be affordable housing at this particular development if it happens.
Right, but they, so yes, we can, we get the percentage and also the numbers, because one of the big things is the numbers, right? So once you add all the projects that we have now, and then you add more market rate, then you're going to have, let's say it's, you know, goes from, you need, to get to your ten percent, you need two fifty now, it goes to five hundred. You know, at some point, you're looking at either having zoning ordinances that require affordable, but you're really going to look at a fortyB project, which is going to have a much bigger impact on the schools at some point somewhere. So we should have that discussion, and we'll try to maybe have that at the next meeting.
I'll put together some data for you.
Great. Okay, so we'll take members of the public now, you can talk about anything. We are going to talk more about traffic at the next meeting, when we have our traffic engineer. If you want to talk about traffic now, you can, but we're not going to have great answers for you. So what I'll ask is if you have a comment, you can just make a comment, if you have questions, make them to me, and then we'll get the right person to try to answer the question. So anyone who wishes to make a comment or question, thank you, come on up.
You're welcome.
Sir?
First, for Mr. Mealy, I'm really concerned when you use the redistricting word.
So again, to, all questions, why don't you ask them to me, make all your comments, and then go through all of them, and then we'll figure out who needs to.
So I guess, I guess it's not, it's not really so much a question as it is a comment.
Great.
Our schools are packed. Our schools are packed. We heard it from him, the middle school is packed, nowhere to go. He said that, you know, we got the three schools in this area, Atkinson, Thompson, and Kittredge. Okay, we all know Kittredge has nowhere to go. I'm at Atkinson, which was the best of the three that he cited, Atkinson's got nowhere to go. These are not marginal costs. These, we need, we can't think about this as just forty-four new kids in the system. These are much bigger costs to build townwide infrastructure to handle everything that we're talking about. And so to talk about it as forty-four kids, I think is just not looking at it comprehensively at all. And when we add that to, you know, David said that they've got fifty-one apartments. I think he said that they were probably like studios and one bedrooms. You know, we've got the other stuff in the immediate area. We've got the stuff that's already going on across from Barker. The schools are getting crushed. And it's not just forty-four, it's not just forty-four. So that's point number one. And if part of our solution is redistricting, please, that is not a solution. I would like to know if, you know, either at the planning board or from the firm, I've seen a lot of these things where they say, hey, we're going to build this and it's going to have this number of kids into the system. Has there any been ever retrospective analysis where you've taken a look at something that you've built and then five years later, you've said, how many kids actually went into the system? Because every single thing that I've heard is prospective. And it seems to me that we should have an awful lot of data at stuff, even in this very town that's been built to say, you know, are these numbers, this point six, seven number, is that a good number? Because we can talk about the experts, we can talk about the experts database that she has, but I'm wondering, why aren't we using retrospective data instead?
So that's a good question. I think, I think Jimmy did talk about that, some from the ones from the Berry, right?
Well, two things. One, first, I'd like to apologize for any misunderstanding regarding redistricting. I was speaking specifically, I should not have used that word. It's, the specific student would go to a different school. We would not, we are not thinking about redistricting. And regarding that last point, all of our analysis is retrospective based on experience that we've seen with other developments in town.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
Yeah, so he did say that based on that, the numbers were actually less.
Okay, okay. That's good to know. I would like to take a look at some of the slides that Avalon put up. Just to point out a couple of things, if you could put up the slides that showed North Andover, the bird's eye view of North Andover. Actually, could you go back to the table? So the FAR, what is that?
Floor area ratio.
Floor area ratio, okay.
Go ahead, David. Hold on, let him, we'll let him answer the question.
Two comments. One, just on your school question. I'll tell you that our data that we use to build a model that's predictive for this future development is all based on actual unit, actual units that exist and school-aged children that come out of actual apartments that we've built in the eleven thousand apartments we have in Greater Boston.
So it's retrospective?
It is.
Okay, okay.
So it's a, we look at the existing data that we have and we've built a model that's, should be predictive.
Okay.
And I think the schools is sort of jive.
Okay, I missed that point.
No, it's okay. And then as it relates to, the second question was...
What is the FAR?
Well, okay.
Oh, FAR, oh, yeah, so that is roughly total square footage that's built divided by total lot area. So the land area.
Size of the buildings divided by the size of the...
So that's just a ratio for that.
So here's what concerns me when we start talking about density. It, we're talking about density sort of within the footprint of the development itself and we don't really talk about the density of the surrounding area. So if you go to the North Andover slide.
Sure.
You know, we all know, we've got the one egress here onto a relatively tiny street. We have a lot of houses here. We have a lot of residents here. Okay, we've got wetlands here and then we've got downtown. So if you go, can we go to the next one? Okay. Okay, it's, there's nothing. Look at this road. This is not a nice road, okay?
No, I agree.
Can we go to the next one? You know, this is very different. This is a, this is a two-lane road in both, in both directions. Can we go to the next one? Okay. Is this, which one is this?
This is Quincy.
Yeah. There's a lot of green area here. So, you know, my point is that the density of the development itself, sure, that's great. But what I'm really concerned about is the density of the neighborhood. And, and I think that if you were to, if you were to, you know, you could count the number of houses in this picture on one hand almost. And if you go back to the North Andover slide, you know, so, so this, I think, you know, the table's nice. But, you know, the point that I want to make, and also High Street is not Route One in Saugus. So, so this is what concerns us about density. This is what concerns me about density, much more so than the floor area ratio of the footprint of the property. And so...
No, I, I think we understand that point and that point's been pretty well said by you and by others. I mean, we understand that they're asking for a lot of apartments in a pretty small area next to a residential and next to commercial, so we get that. At the same time, we're also looking at, you know, if you look at the letter from local business owners and what Dave from RCG said is that there is, on the other side of the argument, a potential benefit to having more density in a downtown area. So those are the things that we're...
If we have the infrastructure to support, if we have the infrastructure to support it, the schools and the roads.
Yeah.
I'll be quick, trust me. Hi, Bill Powell is from Sutton Pond. Dave, I had a question for you.
So, when you ask...
I'm sorry, okay, I have a question.
Ask the question, then if Dave will call him up.
You can call him, okay, fine. On the East and West Mill, on the office part, how much of that right now is vacant?
Okay.
Reason why is that's more cars are going to have to move from the West Mill to the East Mill to park. If they're moving all those cars out, I see there's a lot of vacancy, that's a lot more cars. The other question I have is if there's four hundred and eleven children, adults, we'll say, or people that are going to be moving in, forty-four of those are kids. There are at least three hundred and sixty-seven possible people that can drive. That parking lot's not going to hold that. No way. The other thing, it looks pretty, but the road itself, that with all the sidewalks that are going to be built there, the eighteen-wheelers will not be able to back into that mill. We took a picture the other day of an eighteen-wheeler struggling, as is. You put a sidewalk there, that's not going to happen. They will not have the room to back into that, especially if there's two of them. The other day, we counted...
Just for the point related to that, it's the point that I made at the beginning of the meeting was that there's two applications here, the subdivision and the commercial project.
Yes.
We have not seen the engineering for the subdivision. We have town standards of what the roadway has to be.
Because you need X amount of feet.
Well, that's what I mean. So that's, we're going to see that, we just haven't seen that yet. I'm glad you brought it up because it's something that we should address explicitly, but the subdivision roadway should address that.
It has to, but see, if that has to be moved, that affects his parking.
Well, it all ties together.
So I'm just trying to clarify and make sure that everybody here understands that. Whatever has to be moved takes away from the parking.
Yep.
Also, the problem is, according to, you know, Avalon, we're saying they're taking ten spots off the street. That's part of the parking. Good Time and Jamie's have issues with parking now. What's going to happen if you take ten more of those away from them? And you add more, you know, restaurants and it's supposed to be pretty, you know, designed, there's no parking available. Everybody from the West Mill is going to have to cross the street to park into the East Mill. You're adding fifty-one more units, where are they going to park? The other problem you're going to have, I do have a question, what are the lease terms? Are they tenured at will, six months? We lived in an Avalon, my wife and I, before we moved because we couldn't find a house. You're going to get a lot of those. They're not going to be townies. They're not. The other thing you're going to get, you're going to get a lot of Meramec kids because they can park there and leave their cars there, just like they're doing across the street from where, because they're hurting now from, they have no housing there. You are going to get a lot of Meramec kids. That's life. That's the way it is. And they're not going to care about what property. It's all well and good. And I understand, you know, he has to do his job and sell his product. But that's, at the end of the day, when they're done, it's everybody here's problem. And you are going to get a lot of college kids living there. It's going to be temporary because they can park there, leave their car, take the shuttle, come across the street and go to school. And that's what's going to happen. And you're going to get a lot of people training, up and out, and there's no way that those four hundred spots are going to hold it. You have three hundred and seventy people possible living there, there's only forty-four children, I'll accept that. That's the way it is. There's three hundred and sixty-seven people that are going to be living there that could have a car. That's seven hundred cars. I mean, where's, where are they going to park?
Two cars per person.
What's that?
Two cars per person. I mean, I was okay with you till you got to that point.
What's that?
If there's three hundred and sixty-seven people, they're not going to be more than three hundred and sixty-seven cars.
Yeah, so you're going to have, we'll say four hundred cars. You're going to have a lot of, it's not going to be able to hold that. It's not going to be able to hold that. And then, well, I'm counting two hundred from the West Mill that are parking there. David, where were they going to go, to the East Mill?
So parking is definitely a concern. I was, went down there last week, midday, eleven o'clock, and parking was tight just then.
Just then.
So parking is definitely a concern. I think, so two things we're going to do, we're going to, it's going to be looked at. One, maybe we can talk about more parking when we talk with the traffic engineer and talk about that. But we're going to have a site visit where we go. Everything's going to be staked out where the buildings are proposed, what trees are proposed to be cut down because I have concerns about that too, and where everything's going to go. And I think that'll give us a better sense when we go down of what the parking situation is now and what is being proposed. Because that is a significant concern and what...
I can't, I can't make sense out of it, to be honest with you.
We're going to keep talking about it, yeah.
That's the part. The other thing too is the conservation of the wetlands. How much of the nine point four is that wetlands?
Okay, so that's a good question. So why don't we get, why don't we get an answer to the wetlands? And anything else you want to answer, then we'll get David up to talk about that.
Are they going to be tenured at will or are they going to be terms? I mean, that's important. They're going to be here monthly, gone, that's...
Yeah, so a couple of things on our rent, who our renters are. One is that we don't rent to undergraduates. So there won't be undergraduate Meramec students here. If there was a graduate student who wanted to live here, then we would entertain that. But we don't rent to undergraduates as a rule for our communities. That's one. Two, relating to wetlands, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I think that the portion of the project that's in the R four district, which is really the area that we're leaving alone, majority of it is wetlands, is two, two, two to three acres. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
I think it's like three acres.
Yeah, it's just under three acres.
They tried to put it in six acres, that's what I was wanting to make sure. The other thing too, the units that would be in show, no, how many of those are five stories?
We, I'm sorry, what was?
The comparable sites that we were showing, how many of those are five stories?
Okay, I can go through that.
Yeah.
I know a few of them.
All right, you got to let him answer.
Let him answer, go ahead.
Sure. So first, let me just go through the tenant terms. Generally, it's a twelve-month lease. We do at times go a little bit longer than that or a little bit shorter than that case by case basis. So if someone was a corporate relocation, they were looking for a house, they said, listen, I really only want a six-month lease, we would entertain that. They pay a premium to be on a six-month lease because our standard term is twelve months. And if you're there for six months, we have turnover costs associated with someone leaving the apartment and needing to, you know, clean it and get it ready for the next tenant and include for that downtime. So in general, it's a twelve-month lease that folks would be signing.
Okay, and so why don't we go, Dave?
Do you want to go through the density questions and then turnover, Dave? Yeah, sure, we can flip through, I can tell you the four and five stories, so. We flip through, this one's, as we know, Avalon, I think, is probably five stories, fifty-five feet. Marlboro is four sto, is four stories. Hingham is predominantly five stories with some portions of it that are four stories as well. It's also on a podium. Quincy is five stories and five stories over a podium, so it's six stories. So five stories of stick construction over a podium level. Saugus is four stories for the buildings on the far right, the two L-shaped buildings. And the U-shaped building is, there's a huge grade difference on that site. So it's four stories at the front and then it's five stories at the back. And then these are three-story buildings, the townhouses and direct entries at Sudbury.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
There's one piece of information that I wanted to add. In terms of, you said you hadn't seen the engineering for the subdivision. Last, at the last meeting, the subdivision plans were included in your packet and they actually had their initial review through peer review and department review as well. But the initial subdivision plans were part of your last application submission.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I like to do it at the meeting, but I like to see it, you know, at the end where the roadway is. For example, how do they deal with that, you know? Is it, is it going to be a turnaround or is it sort of going to be like a turnaround of paper, but not a...
Do you want to talk about that next time when we have traffic?
Yeah, I think that would be...
Okay, so if we could walk through the engineering on the proposed subdivision. David, do you have vacancies?
Yeah, the, the commercial spaces on the campus combined, East Mill and West Mill, about ninety-five percent occupied, which is sort of a stabilized condition. It's hard to get much higher than that actually in this market. So all the cars that are there are basically full capacity for the, for the current uses, maybe even a little overcapacity compared to the market. The parking across the campus does have a lot of excess parking at this time. I think we've mentioned that the parcels were, would be conveying to Avalon Bay. Do have typically hundreds of spaces available during the day. There's some temporary uses there at times. There are a number of people that do park on that side. Part of the reason why we're trying to get the shared parking area designated as such because it's convenient parking for the building. We do have a lease with Meramec College, it's about three hundred parking spaces on the garage. So those are occupied through that lease. And that, that only goes through next May, one more academic year, and we'd probably reevaluate that based on the need for that and the new. So that would give three hundred spare to relocate any cars on campus to there that are daytime office users. The most competitive parking obviously is in front of the restaurants, in front of some of the retail uses on the street, trying to get into a, into a front door. But as far as the total parking capacity of East Mill and West Mill combined, it's a campus, which is how, where the parking's been used since before we owned it. There's a lot of excess parking now, but, and the parking was designated as part of the special permit process for the new units that were planned for East Mill as well that are being carved out of the excess East Mill parking.
Thank you.
Hi, Kamono?
My name is Betsy Cody. I own and live the house one sixteen to one eighteen High Street on the Director Butter. First of all, I'm reading a letter from somebody else because she doesn't have her glasses. Carol Libby. And then I'll address my concerns. Okay, to the planning board, we, the taxpayers and residents who signed the petition, who are here tonight, do not want this application approved. We say a resounding no to the encroachment of our small residential neighborhood. We have to deal with the encroachment of businesses such as the West Mill with the parking garage and parking lot and all the restaurants and businesses across the street. The traffic congestion egress of traffic from the Pearl's apartment complex will increase the encroachment of our neighborhood. Again, we say a resounding no to the approval. Avalon Bay is a business that doesn't care about our neighborhood. They're out to make money and will move on. We do not want a nice or an apartment complex, enough is enough. You, the planning board, should protect our neighborhood, not businesses. Again, a resounding no. Not the Andover's bedroom community that does not want to become a grassless asphalt jungle like Lawrence. We want to protect our neighborhood. Since the planning board approved approval of the other apartment complexes, have you thought about the threat to our greatest resource like Chikowick? Have you thought about the impact on our water supply and on our community? The last drought, we told not to water our lawns or wash our cars. If approved, will you tell us not to water our lawns, wash our cars, or even shower with the next drought? Again, a resounding no for the approval. RCG wants to subdivide its property into three lots, I don't know if this is true or not. Let them sell those three lots... Let them sell those three lots to the homeowners, keep our small residential area, just that residential. No more encroachment by RCG. They've encroached enough into our residential community already. If they sell to homeowners, the impact would be six cars, not possibly four hundred and eleven or more cars. Again, a resounding no. Have the planning board also consider the impact on our schools with the six hundred apartments already approved? Will you, the planning board, tell us that we need hiring more teachers, possibly new school in the near future? Again, a resounding no. If the apartment complex is built, we have not talked about a possible fire and the difficulty the fire department have with entrance and egress with their equipment. Again, a resounding no. Currently Prescott High and Water Street are dealing with fire trucks, tractor trailers, buses, vans and other vehicles converging on these streets. It's enough, we don't want more traffic. Again, a resounding no. Please, planning board, do what's right for the taxpayers and deny this approval. Over twelve hundred taxpayers and residents should have more impact on our residential neighborhood than RCG. That was by Carol Libby. So. Can you bring back the picture of High Street? I wanna talk about my, okay. My impact, and he was saying a hundred and eighty-six feet from, I live at, I have this outside. He says two hundred and seventeen feet to my house. What about my backyard? I'm not supposed to use my backyard? I'm gonna go here and look at a fifty foot building?
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna have any more privacy? I can have someone, I can't go out my yard? I'm gonna be looking at a brick wall. And also I've lived here around Andover, I'm a woman of my life. I left for fifteen years, worked low and I came back to take care of my parents and also cause I wanna raise my kids in a town. I've been through three districts drinking with my children. I started off the Atkinson. I went to Franklin. I went to the Thompsons. So don't tell me it can't happen, it can. I went through when the Sutton Pond, that first went in, we had to have a lawyer, ten thousand dollars, the neighborhood, cause they wanted to get on the house next to me to put a driveway through for an egress. When we all knew it was illegal, but other things happened at the time. Well, we got a lawyer. We stopped it. It was illegal. Pe- even people, and the lawyer we hired was, worked for big developers and he walked and he was called a turncoat, because even little people can hire big lawyers. My problem is, there are wetlands over here too. I grew up, there was a pond here. It goes, you have to go down now and walk it. Don't go down with them in your psychism. Go take a walk by yourself. Right now, we're in a drought. I wish you'd gone and marched people in there. There is all water in here. When I grew up, there was a pond here. I used to ice it. There was, take a walk further down, we go to the old Disney Bridge. This is not, this is wetlands. If the pond's finished, approves it, there's something wrong, cause I know how wet it is here. I just walk my backyard. I can't walk my backyard. It's wet. Soon as I come down here. I'm just sorry that my father worked in Davis and Ferber. I've seen this town go through a lot of changes and unfortunately, they're not for the best. You have all these big developers coming in. How many more units are we gonna put up? You're gonna have the one up across from, uh, the airport. You have Princeton. Princeton's huge, the Lowell area. I know what they're like. Those are the most hideous, ugly buildings. My friend comes to the house and they go-
So let's-
What is this apartment? No, I'm just saying, you're adding to it. One, I'm at the breaking point. I wanna leave town. My husband won't move. If I had my way, be gone tomorrow. I have no regrets. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Sally Finnamore. I live at ninety High Street. Um, just wanna point it out right here. Right up here is where we live. And again, I, I will say the same thing that Betsy just said. It may be two hundred feet or a hundred and ninety-two feet from my house, but this entire section is my backyard. So that's fifty feet, not-
Can you give me, for context, how close, does the parking lot, existing parking lot come up to your, all the way to your property or-
So I have a fence right here and there's about, I think, eight feet behind it. That's all grass that I believe is my property. Um, and then the parking lot is-
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Um, so I have a couple of things that I wanted to address. Um, first off, I wanted to present to you for public record, the petition that we have had going around. So as of tonight, we've collected one thousand two hundred and ninety signatures of people who are opposed to this project. Uh, it was done both online and by neighbors who went out on foot, door to door, to many people in the whole residential neighborhood to talk about this and to, um, voice their opposition. It also includes comments from people from the online petition as well. Um, the online petition is still open. I can certainly update that if we get more signatures and, um, present those to you as well. Um, one of the things that Avalon talked about today was the fiscal impact. And I wanted to touch on just something personal that i- is about our fiscal impact. And I submitted to the planning board earlier today, um, the decline in home values for a Butters. And maybe in neighborhoods where houses are not directly in the backyard of a project like this, it doesn't affect the home values. But we did have a realtor come out to our home. We bought it six years ago. She sold the house to us six years ago. And what she said to us is that today, without any project or plan for a project, and tomorrow, with that plan in place or that apartment, or that apartment complex there, we will lose a hundred thousand dollars in our home value. That is a huge fiscal impact. As probably anybody here knows who owns a home, it is your biggest investment. We plan to sell our home at some point to retire. Knowing that we're gonna lose a hundred thousand dollars, that could change that plan for us and it could change the timeline of that plan for us. So in the, sorry, I have papers all over the place here. In the permit language that says, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, I think that's a pretty big adverse effect. And it's not just me. It's anybody who lines that property or on Pearly Street or Thorn Dyke or any of those houses that are gonna turn around every day and look at a fifty-five foot building with balconies looking down on us. So not only do we lose our home value, we lose the privacy and feeling that we have purchased a little piece of our own paradise in North Andover, because we now have a whole group of people who are looking in on us and we're not able to fully appreciate what we have any longer. I wanted to speak a little bit to the, the slides that you showed. And again, you spoke about comparing apples to apples. Unless I understood that wrong, there wasn't a single one that you showed us that was smack dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood. They were on highways. They were surrounded by trees. They were multifamily homes or other condominiums or apartment buildings. But I didn't see any that were like this. I saw there were roads that were really long and big that could access all of this traffic and, and accommodate it. But again, like somebody else said, High Street is not that. My driveway is kitty corner to the Prescott intersection of High Street. And every day, every day, there are multiple near misses in that intersection. People have died at that intersection. My son just got his driver's license and the first thing we said to him is, you may never back out of our driveway. It is not safe to do so. We moved to an area near buildings. We knew that would be an issue. But to add four hundred more cars every day, going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, with that intersection there, with the intersection of Water Street and High Street, and with the intersection of Sutton Street and High Street, I, I just don't know how it's going to happen without major, major impact on the traffic and on accidents and on people getting hurt. There are no sidewalks on High Street for people to walk on. There is no curb. So people actually drive on the road. When they're coming around the corner by my house, they drive on the sidewalk, because there's no curb to go up on. So if you want this to be a walkable neighborhood, if you want this to be pedestrian friendly and pedestrian safe, I, I don't see how that's gonna happen. Maybe you're gonna fix all the sidewalks too, where if all of those students who are going to those schools, any of them have to go up to the high school, there's also no sidewalks on Prescott Street for them to access the high school. So. I appreciate your listening. I know you guys are all volunteers and having been a volunteer in many aspects of the town myself, I understand that it can be thankless. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hello, again. So I'm Diane Montella. I live at Sutton Pond. By the way, Sutton Pond has a lot of feeling for our residential neighbors in the one family, very much so in the one family homes. Um, and it's, at this point, it's a harmonious relationship, right? Okay. So, um, today I have questions and comments about data, numbers. And I know you have covered some of this. And again, I'm, I'm not just being stupid, but I may have missed some pieces of information. So, uh, so we're talking about two hundred and fifty units and we're estimating four hundred and eleven people. So that's, and I, I, I saw the table where you estimated how many peop- bodies would be in the one bedroom, the two and the three, but that's one point six people per unit if you just do a two fifty, you know, four, four hundred and eleven divided by two fifty, right? So one of my questions in terms of data is, what is the projection for how much these units are going to probably market for, for a, a lease?
Sure. Do you want me to answer that question?
Yeah, I think that was in the material.
Yeah, um, it's in the initial orders, but I would say that the rents would probably start for the studios around seventeen fifty a month, seventeen hundred a month. Um, one bedrooms would be approaching two thousand, two bedrooms twenty-four, twenty-five hundred and three bedrooms would be three thousand dollars and above.
And I understand that those numbers are not as shocking today as they were ten years ago, but they're still high. And so the other question I have is, does Avalon normally restrict the number of bodies that can be in a unit?
Yes, there's occupancy standards related to, uh, the health code.
The bulk of the units are two bedroom? Is that true?
It's fif- it's forty, yeah, it's forty-nine percent. I don't have the num-
Two bedroom? So what is, what's the-
Just finish. It's about forty-nine percent studios and ones. Let me just pull it, let me just answer your question completely. Hold on one second.
Turn around, here's the number.
So we've got a hundred and seventeen is the, is the winner of the two bedrooms in terms of the numbers and the ones and twos. That's what you just said. So what's our occupancy, our ceiling of our occupancy standard for the two bedroom?
I can check, but I believe the occupancy maximum by the health code is two people per bedroom. So it would be four people.
Okay, okay.
And then I think there's a, there's a caveat that says that if you have a child that's under a certain age, you know, two years old or something like that, that you can increase the occupancy. But I can check on that and get back to the board to answer that.
Okay. So, so my prediction is that we're gonna be looking at more than four hundred and eleven people in this complex. The, the rents are high enough that it's going to be difficult for people to afford those rents. One person in a one bedroom, two thousand dol- or seventeen, two thou- two thousand dollars? One person, seventeen hundred dollars? You have to be making some change in your salary.
Can I challenge you for a second on this?
Sure.
Because, and I don't, it all mean to be difficult, but, um, their data that they have is based on an enormous amount of history, uh, of market rate apartments and so forth. And you're just making a hypothesis, you don't think it's right, but you're not coming up with any alternative data. And, and I think it's-
I know what, I know what units rent for in Sutton Pond.
I, I know that, but-
And it's less than that.
I, I know that, but my point is, do you have any history for any apartment complexes anywhere that have higher residential numbers? I, I think, I think you're barking, a lot of your questions are good. I think you're barking up the wrong tree on this one, is I, I think the number's going to be at that level, give or take a little bit. It, it really is and it's based on a lot of data. You're speculating, you have no information-
Okay.
-to rebut that.
Okay, so that, that will-
I think other points are better points that you're making.
Okay.
And I think you're a careful thinker, but this is not, in my mind, a winner.
Okay, all right. I, I mean, I can appreciate the comment, having said that, um, this was another question I had. I work for Department of Veterans Affairs. We let out a lot of contracts, government contracts to, um, you know, private companies. And we, you, you don't do a contract with somebody and accept their analysis. You do your own analyses. And I know that, that, I've heard that the planning commission is planning to do some analyses or take analyses from the town. But so my question is, are we doing, are we looking at those numbers? You're, you mean, forgive me Avalon, because I know you're here doing your job, right? But, but I, I, I'm not gonna purch- I'm, I'm not gonna sell to you with your numbers. I'm gonna do my own numbers. So are we doing those numbers? Do we know? Do we know?
Well, we've already had the school department look at the school age population.
No, I heard that, but I mean, on the predictions of how many bodies are gonna be in these buildings. Is, are we doing an independent analysis? Because if we're not, then my assumptions are probably as good as anything. I'm, seriously.
I'm not sure. Um, are we doing? I don't know, I don't know if we are. We'll look into that. I think, I mean, it's, I know in the projects, the other projects that we've seen, these numbers seem consistent with-
Yeah, that's what I mean. I mean, it's, it's consistent with our history in this town, so.
Okay. So I think the person over here, you're from RCG, right?
I am.
Do you folks own those beautiful loft apartments on Water Street? One bedroom is going for how much? Approximately?
Eighteen hundred.
Okay. And do you know what your occupancy is in terms of one or two people in those?
Uh, typically one. I think in our sixty-six units, we have about ninety people total.
Okay. So that would be consistent with those numbers?
Our ratios are probably lower in the lofts now.
Okay, okay. Um, and I, and I also had concerns about parking, but I think that got answered, so I think I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Earlier in the meeting, you did ask us to have the fiscal impact looked at, so it's
Earlier in the meeting, you did ask us to have the fiscal impact looked at, so it's something that I'll apply.
Mr. Planning Board, how are you? Mr. Chairman, how are you? My name is Phil DeColigero, seventy-five Meadow Lane. Um, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, but I speak as an individual tonight, not on behalf of the Board. I don't wanna repeat, 'cause I, I think what Sally ended with is perfect, you guys are volunteers, you give a lot of time, and I don't think I wanna waste it by repeating a lot of the great things, for instance, that John Finnamore said last meeting. I feel like he basically encapsulated everything that I've heard and felt about this project perfectly. The reason why I rise more is because tonight, um, we're talking about the fiscal impact on our town, specifically in regards to our school district. And just using the data that was presented this evening, um, the assumption that forty-four students come into this district, that's approximately four students per grade. And with their data that they're giving us, they're saying that they're looking at forty-five to fifty percent turnover, they use the term "stable." So that helps us, numbers-wise, predict the number of students. However, not all students are created equal, some students have additional needs, and that's good, because we as a town strive to provide the best possible education. And so part of what's motivating me to approach the microphone is that I hear quite often from our educators in town about they aren't just numbers, our students, and when a new student moves into a classroom, they strive to meet the needs of that student, to make sure they get the education that they deserve. And a lot of times, those students require a great deal of catching up, because of course, they've not been part of the school year, and that teacher doesn't necessarily know what that student does or doesn't know. And so, this doesn't even account for the other apartments that would be going into this particular school district, which again, geographically, right now, is Thompson. But just to add, every grade, two more students hypothetically that would be moving in or out of the district in the middle of the year, causes that teacher, and as a result, that entire classroom, to have to refocus energies and resources. And so I, I just would ask that, as you consider the fiscal impact, I mean, those teachers are going to need more than just another classroom. Those teachers, when they have students moving in, are going to require additional help and support themselves. Because what I hear from both teachers in the classrooms that have those students moving in, as well as other teachers who don't have to worry about that same type of destabilizing, um, impact on their classrooms, is that the burden, the expectation, the stress on that teacher is so much greater, and as a result, impacts the entire classroom. And so, just, I ask that you please consider that as well, that, um, I guess you could call it the intangible effect that that has on classrooms, especially in regards to the additional fifty-one units that haven't been built, and then the units at the KFC property. And so, um, I just would end with, again, I appreciate your time and, and the patience in the audience as well. Thank you.
Hey there, Robin Morgeson, one-forty-seven High Street. A couple of things, again, I, I won't repeat what was already said, or forgive me, I will, I try not to repeat this very few points. I think John mentioned, and I agree, John was fantastic at the last meeting in his comments. I think he asked a question, and I'm not sure I got clarity on that, which was around the, um, developer's original master plan, which, I, I looked at it, and it looked like it was a row of townhouses originally intended for the, for your master plan. So I'm curious as to what changed, how we got from that to what exists today in the proposal. So I'm, I'm just gonna throw that out as a question, I, forgive me if it was addressed, but I don't remember that. The point about the egress on Sutton Street, which it sounds like is questionable whether that's even possible. My concern is that, um, and I appreciate why you said it, but my, my concern is that it doesn't negate the, one of the biggest factors, which is the disproportion of this massive fifty-five-foot, you know, building or buildings towering over the houses. So, it's, it, it addresses maybe some of High Street, although I still think we're gonna get a lot of it on High Street. It's still, it's the big white elephant in the room is, is the proportion of the buildings. I agree with the fiscal snapshot, and I'm a little curious as to how much we're gonna, I'm curious to hear what the town's assessment of the fiscal impact on everything, not just the schools, but the impact on our other services. And just one other thing about mention of downtown, there was, I, I heard it at the last meeting, and I heard it again tonight, which is the potential benefits of this type of development to downtown. I, I'm a resident of High Street, I've lived on High Street for almost twenty years, and I don't consider High Street downtown. I consider it a residential neighborhood, I think of Main Street as downtown and the businesses. And so, you know, there's a big difference there, yet can we walk to downtown? Yes, but I don't think of myself living in downtown. And so I feel like there's a, there's a, there's a distinct difference there. And when I think about what the impact will be on downtown, I think you must be talking about the positive impact on the businesses. So, um, I, I look at the businesses that we patronize all the time, the, um, the restaurants and the cafe and all of that. And they're super busy, they're super busy already, it's hard to get a reservation at Jamie's half the time. I don't think renters are generally gonna be a, a super-target demographic for the hardware store, I could be wrong. But I just don't think that there's a lot of there there for that. So, um, I just question the whole downtown argument, is, is what I'm getting at, that's it.
So just, those are really good points, so just a couple of, I mean, one of the things we talked about in the master plan, and I think it's a really good point that you made, that you don't consider it downtown, is one of the things that we talked about in the master plan was trying to make it feel more like those areas are connected, 'cause I agree with you, right now, they don't feel connected. I'm not saying this is an answer to that, but that's one of the things that we've been thinking about, trying to plan, like, especially with the farmer's market and the artisan market, and trying to find ways to connect those, to make it feel like they're part of the same place, because they do feel like different worlds. Uh, and so that's just one thing that we've been thinking about. So it is, it is, it's not an answer to that, but that, but it is a consideration. So, and one other thing is, again, I, I agree with you, that, that going out to Sutton Street doesn't solve all of the issues. What we're trying to do right now, and there's a reason we haven't really had a full discussion about the heights and the amount of units and stuff like that, 'cause right now, we're still trying to gather data and get questions and comments. I think that'll probably go on for another meeting or two, and then we're gonna have a real thorough discussion here about, okay, is this project as proposed, is this subdivision as proposed, right? Should it be, should we say no, should it be scaled down, what are we thought? We're just not ready to talk about that yet.
Sure.
So we're gonna get there, and I know that's the elephant in the room, of how high and how big and all of that. I just don't think we have the information yet, because we haven't heard from everybody, we haven't got all the answers to the questions, we're moving that way.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna have the discussion, we're just not having it yet.
Yes.
So the things we're gonna do first are, we're gonna talk about traffic, we're gonna try, try to get answers to questions that we have, and we're gonna go out to the scene and see, okay, what does this mean, where are the boundaries gonna be, and how close are they to people's actual yards and houses? And what trees are gonna be there that could provide, um, screening, what trees are gonna be cut down that wouldn't provide screening, and all of those kind of things, before we really have that robust discussion. So it's coming, we're just not there yet.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I, I think just one more comment about the downtown part, which was that, and I think somebody talked about it last, at the last meeting, which is that you have, you know, Elm Street, and then the beginning of High Street where the mill buildings are, and then you have the rest of High Street. And the rest of High Street is a big part, is a, is substantial, and that's residential, that's neighborhood. So, I just wanna make sure that that's represented, which I'm sure you will. But, you know, there's that balance, and that's what we're striving for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea O'Donnell, I am at fourteen Sergeant Street with my husband Kevin, he couldn't be here tonight. We bought our house on Sergeant Street about ten-and-a-half years ago, and we're not directly impacted, like so many of the people here tonight. However, these developments dramatically change the fabric of communities, um, and they leave indelible marks that are irreversible. Once these things happen and grow, they change forever. We came from Reading, where we lived previously, and my late father-in-law referred to Reading as God's country. It's not, it's not God's country anymore, Avalon's put in some, um, apartment buildings there, and it's more like Medford or Melrose now. We don't want that to happen here, I speak for just my husband and I, and perhaps some other folks, we don't want that here. We need more green space, not urban heat islands, uh, which is what this, in my opinion, would be the equivalent of. Again, it changed Reading dramatically, um, it's one of the reasons we chose to move here, to North Andover. I'm curious, I know we're not gonna probably ever find perfect apples-to-apples comparisons for some of the developments that Avalon's done previously. I'm curious why they didn't look at the Reading, um, location. I know that there were significant number of residential housing around that community. I know it's right on ninety-three, but on the other side of it, there's significant amount of residential housing.
We don't, we don't have a community in Reading, so I, there may be something that-
Maybe Archstone or whatever it was.
People calls Avalon, but it's not an Avalon, we never built anything in Reading.
Okay, well, I stand corrected.
You're talking about the one right off the highway, right?
It's right off the highway, if it's not Avalon, it's some other developer akin to an Avalon. My point being that these types of communities change communities once they're in, and I would recommend, if we have not already talked to communities such as Reading or these other locations, not the Waymouths and these nice ones that tend to have a lot more space, that we do that. And we get a sense of the repercussions of these developments longer term. They've been in Reading now for many, many years, and not just this, you know, we got great kitchen islands and beautiful places that people are gonna live in, but what about the rest of the community? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, thank you for coming, that, it, it is good to hear from people who don't necessarily live in the neighborhood, so I appreciate that.
It's a community issue.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Chris Barker, and I live at one-eighty-one High Street. And I wanted to, uh, just add a little bit to a couple of points that had been made. One is the point that this will benefit the businesses downtown. And it probably will in terms of more customers. But one thing that I would like added as part of the study for the traffic is an assessment of what kind of impact it's gonna have at the parking area at what I think is called Marketplace, maybe, where CVS is. Because it seems to me, although I haven't been keeping track, that there are times I go down and the parking lot is pretty full. I don't think I've ever been there where I haven't found a parking space. But I'd be concerned if this is gonna put us over the top, and people are gonna kinda drive around, waiting until something frees up. So if that could be added to the study.
So, we generally don't direct our peer reviewers what to study, we just tell them, study the traffic impact. So if that's, if they think it's gonna have an impact, they'll tell us. I'm, I'm not sure I particularly see it, but they'll, they'll review everything that they think is relevant to the project.
Okay, well, when we come to this traffic study, I will be asking that specific question.
Sure.
Can I put out one quick thing in terms of this traffic study? Part, we had a TRC meeting, and during that, we were asked, staff was asked which intersections we're to study. So, on the, at last meeting, you saw blue dots on, in the traffic study, um, a lot of those locations were identified by, by staff. But again, that'll be at the next meeting, let's-
And the second point I wanted to raise is the twelve-hundred-ninety-six signatures, I think, which I'm assuming, but perhaps it's not the case, that that was essentially adult signing it. And if I were to take that twelve-ninety-six and figure out what percent of North Andover population that is, and I guess North Andover's probably thirty thousand. But if you consider the number of adult, so if it was, so if we were comparing it to thirty K, that's four percent of the population that signed a petition that says we don't want this. But if you consider that of those thirty thousand, they're probably, I don't know, fifty percent of those would be signature signing age, probably, that would be willing to sign something like that, I mean, you're not gonna do kids. So we're talking probably close to eight percent of the population that is not in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one, I think. My name's Rich Robinson, I live on twenty-four East Water Street and just up the road. I think the biggest concern I have is the overburden of the city, of the town. Police, fire, schools, traffic. The real estate Sally mentioned, the thing with real estate, you cannot change the location. That house is here, you put up that megaplex, and I consider it a megaplex, it's five stories, absolutely. Hingham, I believe, is three stories. I've looked at it last night. The other thing is, we're talking market price, et cetera, et cetera, do you factor in all of the additional revenues that you generate from your Avalon Bay? Pets, fees, utilities, you're talking well over three-thousand dollars a month. Am I wrong, or am I right?
For what?
The, Hingham has a hundred-and-seventy-five units and seventeen-point acres. Additional fees, uh, pets at fifty dollars a month, dogs at seventy-five a month, storage is eighty a month, parking is a hundred-and-ninety a month. You pay all your utilities. My point is, it's the overburden, and that's the thing that we really have to really take, as a board, you have to take a look at. It's the overburden, especially in the schools. The schools aren't a fixed budget, every year, they cost more money, whether it's the facilities, transportation, special ed services, fuel, teacher salaries are not fixed, administrative salaries are not fixed, everything keeps going up. What point do we reach where we have to stop? That's my biggest concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have one more question.
No.
I had forgotten.
Okay.
No, but I think it's important.
So, the question, the question was about Avalon Bay's comment that they don't rent to undergrads. So my question is, is that legal?
I'm sure they think it is, otherwise they wouldn't do it. But that's, that's not for us to decide.
Well-
It's, it's, uh, yes, I can get the legal interpretation, the legal opinion from our lawyers, but, um, they're not, undergraduate's not a protected housing class.
But if you're-
So, we don't, we don't do it, so.
The reason, the reason the question is important, a couple of reasons, one is, you know, mo- most undergrads, at least from sophomore year and on, are legal adults. There are students who work and go to school more and more now than ever before, because, you know, schooling is very expensive. And the other issue is, if for some reason the occupancy in those buildings do not fill, I'm guessing you're gonna rent to undergrads. And if that's the case, we are definitely not talking two people per two-bedroom, for example. I'm just making the point about projecting what the burden of human people in that space may be, and the number of vehicles that come along with it, so, yep.
The other gentleman said he was last.
My name is Barbara Dunay, and I live at Sutton Pond, and I just have one question. Up here, we're talking about the total population of four-hundred-and-eleven, and I understand that that's based on, um, some of their studies. But my question is this, if each unit was filled to the maximum that is on the lease, for instance, in a three-bedroom apartment, that could be six people, and in a two-bedroom apartment, that could be four. And I'm just wondering what, how it impacts the total that's on the bottom, if the units were all filled to maximum capacity.
Okay.
That's my question.
Yeah. Sixty plus? No, well, hold on, we're doing math, we're doing math.
It's math at nine o'clock at night.
I would just say, I mean, we can certainly calculate the number, but based on-
I think I got five-hundred-and-eighteen, but-
Yeah. Probably more than that, because it's two per bedroom, it's two per bedroom. As I think is the maximum, but what I would say is, we have eleven-thousand apartments in Greater Boston. This is not, this is based on the information that we have, and there may be a factor plus or minus a few percent, but it's not three times as many people as we would predict would be in the community.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the possibility is there.
Okay, point is taken. Um, okay, so, members of the Board, so I think the next meeting is gonna be July thirtieth, and we're going to, um, talk about traffic, and I'd like to talk about parking and some of the engineering with the subdivision. I think those will be our focus, anybody who wants to come and talk about anything we've talked about, you can, especially in follow-ups. I'd like to do a site visit, do people think it's worthwhile to do that before or after, um, this next meeting?
Uh, before the thirtieth?
Right, before or after, that's what I'm asking.
I prefer to do it before, and we're doing a balloon.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I asked.
Yeah.
So we can ask them about that, so, uh, would you guys be prepared to stake it off and do a site visit prior to the thirtieth?
Uh, I need to talk to the survey, 'cause I wanna actually have the points shot by a, you know, survey company, so I need to get on their schedule. It's a crazy time of year for them, but I think they should be able to do it.
We don't necessarily need the balloon by the site visit, right?
Yeah, spray, spray paint, exits, corners.
'Cause we're not gonna look at pictures at the site visitor, or no, you want the balloon, I'm sorry, so you want the balloon while we go over there. Okay, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. Yes, it is. So we think-
I would need to get back to you, back to you on the availability of lining up those, you know, those folks, I would just-
Do you wanna suggest a certain date, and then, just so you can plan around that, and then if it doesn't work?
Okay, so let's, all right, so let's try to get something and give you as much time as possible.
You don't wanna do that at the last minute?
Weekday evening, I'm thinking?
Yeah, probably would be best.
Thursday the twenty-fifth, Wednesday the twenty-fourth, what do people think?
Twenty-fifth is good for me, or twenty-fourth's not so good, but-
Twenty-fourth is not good.
Yeah.
Twenty, Thursday the twenty-fifth? Okay.
I could do that.
Yeah, I can, not the best, but if it works, everybody else would ignore.
Wanna try Thursday the twenty-fifth at seven o'clock, six-thirty, six earlier?
Do it early.
Six?
Yeah, six.
Six, six is hard.
Six is, I know, I, people need to get back here, too.
Well, I mean, I'm the worst, well, I'll just work at home that day, but I mean, i- i- the problem is, it's, what time is it gonna get dusky in a-
It won't get dark till eight.
Till eight, yeah, six-thirty then.
Six-thirty?
Six-fifteen?
I don't know, what do you want?
Six is a little tough.
Let's say six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
You do have the benefit of the summer.
So, we're gonna tentatively set a site visit for Thursday, July twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM. The idea is that everything will be staked so that we know where the building are, where the limits of work are, where they're gonna be doing the work, where the proposed roads, we can have a sense of that, um, any tree-cutting, things like that. We're also asking that they do what's called a balloon test, so that they put up a balloon, so we can see what people would see from different view corridors, okay? That's a lot to, to do in the next ten, twelve days, so if you can't do it, let us know, and we'll postpone that.
Sure.
For people who don't know, what happens at a site visit, it's an official meeting of the Board, so we will have an official meeting. Members of the public are welcome to come, we will walk around, items will be pointed out of where things are. But we will not be having any discussion or deliberation, we won't be answering questions, they won't be answering questions. If people wanna point out where their houses are, things like that, we can gather information, but it won't be a discussion, okay? If people have questions or things that they wanna discuss afterwards, you have to come back and either submit something to us or come back to a meeting to discuss it, okay, 'cause we're just not allowed to have that discussion there, 'cause it's not recorded, uh, things like that. Okay, so that's going to be, this, this will officially be continued until July thirtieth. Yes, hand, question?
When you have that balloon thing, are you gonna restrict your vantage points to that property, or are you gonna come down High Street so that you can see what it looks like, residential or, or so?
So the balloons will be up in the air, and everyone can really at their-
From anywhere.
But to answer your questions specifically, whether we do it that, we would want them to keep it up for a while. And I know personally, I will go around and try to do a three-sixty view, because you're right. I mean, that's the only way you can do it.
Yeah. We're all, it may not be at that same time that we all do it.
And you're welcome to do the same thing, by the way. Everybody can take pictures.
Right. This is as much for everyone's, for your benefit as it is for ours, so that we all work in with the same information. Okay. Great. So we will continue this public hearing until July... One more.
Item.
Go ahead.
On the parking or the traffic analysis, I take your point that we don't usually direct where. But when I heard the comments, and then I heard what the staff has done, and we have, it seems to me, heard a lot about the relationship of this to downtown as a benefit. And to me, that, I think we can't, on the one hand, be absorbing that, well, there's a benefit downtown, but then we run the risk of the traffic analysis maybe not including downtown. I think we just need to say, I think, that the traffic analysis needs to include downtown, it needs to include the CVS parking lot, because otherwise, we're skewed here. We're sort of absorbing that, hey, there's a benefit there, but we're not, if we're saying there's a benefit, we need to assess the cost.
So I think that's fine, but I think you need to, we need to, the way it's, as I understand it now, is with certain intersections that were studied originally, and then certain intersections that are going to be re-studied. So I think we'd have to add specifically what intersections you want. So you can either do that now, or talk with...
Well, I mean, I think, I'm happy to have the planning staff determine what intersections, as long as it covers some portion of downtown and that CVS parking lot area.
I mean, I think part of the problem is, and I agree with you in the totality of it, is that we have, and people have observed this, but, you know, just in general, we know there are parking and traffic issues in that general area that exist today, that weren't caused by RCG, just exist for a lot of different reasons. Some of which potentially could be ameliorated as a result of what gets developed in this property, but some of which the town has to take action on, has nothing to do with RCG. So I think, I'm okay with doing it if there's that larger context.
Well, to your point, I'm not looking for the traffic analysis to say it's really bad downtown. I'm hoping the traffic analysis would give us a delta, that as a result of this, here's the increase or decrease that we would expect to see in that area. And I think the delta is directly related to this project. And then, you know, places that are already bad, you're right, that's not the responsibility of this. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see where you go. It's just, I think when we get back to traffic analysis, if I remember sort of how they work, is they basically look at the traffic patterns over all the ways out, and how many trips get generated, where they get generated. So, I mean, to some degree, looking at, you know, the CVS parking lot would be, how much of a trip count do you think is going to come from the downtown facility to, I mean, from the facility to downtown North Andover? I think that's maybe a better context, because people can park behind Town Hall, they can park there, they can park on the street, they can park at other people's.
Sure. It may not end up being that parking lot, but some measure of impact on the downtown.
So, yeah. I would think that your traffic study would include that, that, you know, if people leave the site, how often are they going to come to downtown North Andover? The study intersections were based on, our engineer had an initial assessment. We used some of the previous reports RCG made. We met with town staff. They suggested an expanded report. We included the intersections that Sutton Pond wanted us, the bridge, how many people are coming over the bridge. So that was our original study area that we did in May. My suggestion would be, let's let our traffic engineer come and make his presentation on the thirtieth. If there's additional areas that the Board wants us to study, we'll take a look at them. But I think what he would say, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'll try to answer the question, is that, not parking areas, but traffic flow going past a place. If you, if you know how many are going past this threshold, it doesn't make sense to study the intersection one pass, because you already know how many people went past this intersection, so that many people are going to go past the next intersection. So I think that, I'll let him speak to that next week to be able to answer any questions, but I'll go from there.
We'll ask about it, but yeah, if you could, I mean, if there's anything we can add with the down...
I hope there's an intersection in the downtown. Let's be...
I don't remember one on Main Street, but...
Yeah. We showed the map last time. I have the intersections here, and the ones that are on Main Street, Main and Elm, Main